Let us pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, giver of life and wisdom and strength and all things that are good. We invite your presence here this evening as our city council men and women. We engage in a time of taking care of the business that is set before them. Father, we pray for your wisdom and your strength and your courage. We pray for the staff also as they work together for our community. We pray heavenly Father for all of our men and women who serve so sacrificially in so many ways across our community. We are grateful for their, their work and we pray for them and their family. And Father, we ask that you would watch over us these days, protect us from danger, from harm, and help us that we will always be grateful for all the good things that you bestow on our lives each day. We pray these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Henry. Item one is consider approval of agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I've tried to follow the, all the contract thing. I've been trying to figure out which ones we should maybe take a look at or all of them or...
Maybe just the D, just 2D, since that has all of those in it.
2D.
D, D? 2D has the Contract Review Committee ones in it specifically.
Let's just pull that item off.
Okay.
I move that for a second.
All right, a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 2D right now by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. All right, anything else? Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2D, approve Community Service Contract Review Committee recommendations for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
The first item on that is a Y. I don't think there's probably any problem with that consideration as a senior citizen. There's probably not any problem with that consideration. Contract was sent to Oklahoma. I've been contacted by the, some of the board members and also by the director. And so I wonder if it'd be possible maybe to hear from a couple of people concerning that tonight. I don't want to open up for a two-hour discussion or anything. And item four, we need the clarification on that, that contract RSVP. We've never had a contract with RSVP. That's wheel, uh, the, what do you call it, on wheels, food on wheels?
Meals on Wheels.
Meals on Wheels, that's done to what, the project park.
It's, um...
But this RSVP is a volunteer organization that was wanting our money for, we understood for maintaining some research. And somebody else on that committee can correct me, but that's what I understood. Is that not correct? And therefore, it wasn't funded because it felt like it's a duplication. And we're not going to have a hearing on that tonight. But anyhow, I'd like to, I've told some people on the, uh, Central Oklahoma Community Action that maybe the director, that we would be interested in hearing from her and also that we could maybe set up, you know, a meeting between the city manager and the mayor or myself and send you some tell there, some of the voting members of that committee or the, or the city attorney in some future date. But the, in our defense, the information that we had at the committee was that all the services weren't being provided as per contract. So we had, had several individuals, had contacted the different committee members and the different people. So we made contact, tried to make contact, what was it, around three times to get different information. And we still didn't get the correct information. So we decided not to renew the transportation. Of course, on the other hand, I don't know what other funds they get, but I know that they do get other funds from the state and so forth. So we're not canceling or we, our funds won't kill a transportation program for, for the, for Shawnee because they could get other funds besides the city of Shawnee. But if the director's here, I don't personally, but if she wants to say a few words, that'd be, be fine.
Would it be okay with the rest of the commission if we listened to some people that might have some concerns about this, this issue? Because I, it, I believe that there are probably a lot of members that came today and instead of taking it under citizens' participation where we can't really ask questions and communicate with them and have a dialogue, that maybe it might better to be handled under this particular item.
I think we need to limit it. I don't want to open it up for 30 people, but...
Three minutes?
Three, yeah.
Is that what you mean? Time?
Some kind of explanation, okay. Um, would anyone like to come and speak to this? Come on up and then, and then tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Stone, the executive director of Central Oklahoma Community Action. I received this appointment in April after serving as the interim since mid-January. And, excuse me, we did a letter proposing what, that we would like to continue contracting with the city in early April. In late April, I received a request to meet with the city clerk and the city manager and Cindy, I'm not sure, title. And during that time, I responded to about four or five questions that were proposed to me. And I also provided a written response to that. I wasn't aware if there were additional questions that needed to be answered, although this week it's been brought to my attention that there were several other issues with maybe why you were reconsidering or not funding us. So I think that COTS provides a vital service to the citizens of Shawnee. We have several citizens who are here that would like to speak, so I don't want to take all the time. But I, being new, would like the opportunity to visit with the commission and see how we might be able to work out the opportunity to continue a contract with the city.
Okay. Just while you're here, usually during contract review procedures, we receive information about numbers of people that had rides to doctor's appointments, rides to work, rides to, oh, personal needs, grocery shopping in the mall, things like that. Assuming that there's another category. And I know that there's some funding that follows some of that, like, like you receive funding maybe from Sooner Care for rides to the doctor. And one of the things that we were looking at and have always considered is especially rides to work. I mean, that's the one that we're, that we're concerned about, I mean, to ensure that people still have rides to work. We know that they do need transportation to other locations. And I think we just, we didn't have that kind of information. We have been receiving some, um...
Complaint.
From potential users maybe about schedule, about they weren't able to get to work at eight o'clock or not able to, to, to pick them up on time. And so our concern was that the, that the hours were narrower than what our contract said. And I think those are some things that we would like to probably discuss with you and ensure that, you know, should we contract, that those needs are met.
Right. And just, like I said, just today, I realized that that was an issue. I know whenever we visited with those I mentioned, that was brought up, excuse me. And, and I provided the ridership where it appears that half of it is medical related, but about 20% is work-related that we provide. And we do have service hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but it is an on-demand service. So if we don't have someone who's requested a ride 24 or 48 hours before, then we don't know. But we do our best to provide the service that we can, even in emergency situations at the last minute. And, and we will, you know, try to fulfill those.
Okay.
Well, one of the complaints was that the office didn't work open till eight o'clock. And so those that had an emergency and were needing a ride to work couldn't contact you till it was supposed to be at work, so...
No, we have a dispatcher and scheduling that is available from seven o'clock.
We need that.
And there's, there's a number for that. And maybe it's promotion, you know, maybe we need to promote that number better.
Yeah, and now that you bring this up, one of the areas that we heard from may have been somebody that was in emergency and would not have known that they needed a ride from a different location. I'll just, I'll just say that, yeah.
And they, emergency situation exists so they wouldn't know 24 hours in advance that they're going to have to have a ride. So some situation need to be worked out on that. But, you know, like I told you on the phone, I'd be willing and I'm sure that maybe the city manager, treasurer, one of us or some of us could probably meet with you and try to work out the details so we can assure you that, you know, so we can be assured that we're meeting in a letter of our contract. And I'm, I know that you're new on the job and that's, got a couple of your board members contacting me and kind of begged and asked and pleaded that we give you an opportunity to get it straightened out and provide the information and so forth. So I don't know, you know, we can table this and, and come back to it in 30 days and maybe at the second meeting in June and come back to it again and see what kind of information we find. I don't want to cut the services and we've talked about it with the committee, talked about it for a long time. We don't want to cut the services because we also realize that you receive other monies, not just from the city of Shawnee. So some of those services that, you know, are required by other ones beside ourselves, so...
And I think the other thing we'd like to know for this future meeting is, are the other funds that you receive, federal funds or state funds, are they linked to you receiving local funds also? Like, is there a, you know, like a 10% match or something like that? And I think that's really critical that we know that also.
Well, and that, that was in my response to our other meeting that we had, but that is true. Yes, we get federal funds and state funds. And what, the money that we receive from the city is largely matched, you know, because we can't use those other funds for matching. And so it helps us to get that funding in to be able to provide the service that we do.
Well, I tried to go over that information and I just didn't have much time after getting home. But anyhow, I kind of glanced over it and I, I didn't see that information. I'm not saying it's not there, I just didn't see it. I didn't see it to start with on review. And I, I spend a lot of time reading every one of those requests and going through all of that information. So if it's there, I just missed it, so...
I'm sorry if I missed it too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But I do, I spend a lot of hours on that stuff and pride myself on knowing what's in that information you provided.
Okay, anybody having any more questions from this panel?
So if this is a budget issue, it needs to be within the next...
Yeah, it needs to be seen.
Well, yeah, I think if I reviewed the budget, it's in the budget.
It's, it's in the budget, we just don't have a contract for services right now.
But in the budget, it's listed as, kind of has an item in the budget.
Yeah.
Email.
We haven't used or we've done other things with the funds, they're still there.
Yeah, we didn't not budget it, so...
But we just don't have a contract for the, how we're going to spend those funds right now.
Well, I can bring the information I have. I'm available to visit or meet whenever it's convenient for you all.
Okay.
And like I said, I think we've had a lot of our riders who have come and if you can give them, you know, maybe one or two, a few minutes, because there was a huge outpouring of concern whenever the newspaper article came out yesterday.
Okay.
I understand.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you help them with microphones from your desk or something if you need to?
My name is Vicky Walls and I am a resident here in Shawnee. And I'm also a member on the Governor's Council statewide independent living. One of the things that Central Oklahoma Transit, when I first moved here in 2002, they were very good about working around the schedule that I had going to classes at OBU. At that time, they did not provide services before eight o'clock. And I have worked with them for the last five years where they have extended their hours starting at seven and going until eight o'clock, which has allowed many of the individuals with disabilities here to get jobs. Because before, the services would only go from eight to four. And there was no way that you could work an eight-hour, you know, work day with a disability and tell your employer, "Well, I can't be to work till 8:30 and I have to leave by 3:30." So Central Oklahoma Transit has been very good about extending their hours. They have also, with me working with them, extended the hours where we have services on the weekends. Services before would only go from Monday through Friday. Services now are also included on Saturdays, which allows individuals with disabilities to continue, you know, whatever activities that the regular population was doing. So the communication may be an issue that they need to work out, but I do know that the services are available if you give them enough notice. And it's not like you can call them one hour and say, "Can you get me in?" Because of all of the other things that they're doing with Sooner Ride and so forth. They have so many drivers that they keep here in the city limits and in those that they're using, you know, traveling the state with medical issues. They require us, which is workable, to at least give 24 to 48 hours notice. If you're going to school or you have a work schedule, if you give them that schedule ahead of time and say, you know, "I'm working Monday through Friday, these are my hours," they will put you permanently into their docket where they know to pick you up at that time. So you don't have to call in every single day to say, "I have to be at work at this time." If you're not going to work after you've been scheduled, you know, permanently in their schedule, you give them notice and say, "I'm canceling for today due to sickness" or whatever, and it's no problem. But we have to, as riders, you know, give them ample time to, to transport us where we need to go and then give them ample time because of the number of vehicles that they have to be able to transport us. So anyone that calls, you know, an hour or 15 minutes and says, "I need to go somewhere," and then complain, you're not giving the Central Oklahoma Transit enough time to even work with you, you know, to get you where you need to go. Because if they don't have a time available, they're, they're going to turn you down.
Well, we appreciate your confirmation that they are, that their hours have extended.
Yes, and I have been working with them. And that's why they have been, they have expanded and are working now from Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
And we're working on even trying to get Sundays where members can go, you know, to church and so forth. So yes, if you give them 24 to 48 hours notice or if you have a permanent schedule, give them that and you will be put in and they will pick you up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I just want to take a minute of your time because I don't drive, I have epilepsy and so it's real difficult to get around. But I found out that when I called COTS and wanted to get transportation for the week, there was no problem. Sometimes I had to say, "Okay, I have to cancel this day," or "I need to add a day here," like that. And they were great about it. And the thing about my situation is I shouldn't be out there walking because if I have a seizure out there, then none of us want that. And I've been very grateful with the service that's been provided. Thank you.
Jim, I'd like you to fill us your name.
James Barker. Like, oh, James.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Rebecca Taylor. I am the social worker at Care Association Adult Day Center here in Shawnee. COTS has allowed me to continue working in my position. And just like Vicky said, that if you give them a schedule, they know I work every day. So they're at my house by 8:30 to pick me up and I'd be at work at nine. So they have allowed me a sense of independence because of some issues in my family. My grandmother had previously been taking me back and forth to work, but she had some medical issues and was no longer allowed to drive and as well as some other things. And COTS provided me, has provided me a way to get back, get to work. And their drivers are very courteous and all their staff is very courteous. At times, I've also needed them to take me places unexpectedly. And once they figured out that I was in a chair and could not use another service like a taxi or whatever, they're very accommodating to do that. The only reason they did not know that I was in a chair and unable to maneuver in the first place is because the driver who took me said to, and I said to her the next day, I said, "Why didn't they know I was in a chair?" And she said, "Because, Steph, I don't see you in one." So she sees the, and I find this to be true of all the drivers I've come in contact with. They see the person, not the disability that you have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is April Dear and I am a driver for Central Oklahoma Transit. And I work here locally in Shawnee. I was working out of town, but I missed all of my Shawnee passengers. So I asked to be put back in the Shawnee area. I am on the clock from 6:45 in the morning until sometimes 5:30 or 6 o'clock at night. I transport on average, daily, 25 to 30 passengers a day, just myself. We have other drivers here today that have come to represent the company to let you know that we are here. And we are doing the best that we can for our passengers. There are several passengers that I pick up daily that are last minute. My dispatcher will call and say, "April, can you go and get so-and-so? They need to go to the doctor, they forgot their appointment, they called, can you accommodate them?" And we do. We have a lot of people that we pick up on a last-minute basis. Our problem is, is that we fill up. Dear.
Dear.
D as in David, E-E-R-E, like the tractor. But, you know, as a driver, this is probably, you know, I went to school for business administration and I'm a driver for Central Oklahoma Transit. It's the best company I've ever worked for. I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world. And I get to meet people like Stephanie Taylor and Vicky Walls and Jim Barker, you know, because they're part of the Shawnee community. And we just want to be a part of that.
Thank you very much.
I would like to say I appreciate the interest in the people showing up. And I'd ask Rebecca to maybe contact the city manager and let us set up a schedule where maybe two or three of us can meet with you and try to work everything out. So with that, Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the committee's recommendation except for item three and, and we'll table it till our next meeting.
Okay. I have a mo-
That's the contract with Central Oklahoma.
Have a motion to approve 2D items one, two, and four as presented and to defer item three to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I have a question that I missed in...
A second by Commissioner Sims, okay, go ahead.
The contract with the Y on the municipal pool.
That is...
That's not part of this.
No, it's not. But that, they have a new director and so that ride, Brian, is supposed to get back on that, or what?
They have a short-term gentleman that was in the interim position. They're looking for a longer than short, short-term. They're not aware that they have a new one yet.
But that's why it's not, but they are opening a field and operating.
Okay, well, I just thought that fell under contract services.
Yeah, this contract is specifically for the services provided at the community center.
Okay.
This one is, yeah.
Right, right. Doesn't exclude the others, but this specifically is funding for that purpose.
I just thought D included everything, all of our contracts.
Nope, nope. Okay, anyone else? Comments on this? Okay, call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just going to say, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. If you, if this was your item of concern, and please ask our staff and the staff of COCA to get together before our next meeting so that we can have a recommendation moving forward. And the budget, I mean, the dollars are in the budget right now. Like I said, we just don't have an entity that we're contracting with to use the dollars. So we do not accept the budget or vote on the budget till our next meeting anyway. So this is part of the public hearing process and I appreciate you being here because of that. Any questions before we go on staff clear? What we need to do? Okay. All right. Item number three, citizens' participation. Anybody like to come talk to us about that or anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Herschel Ring, live at 1417 East Bradley. I'm not for sure if anyone understood the last time I was here about my concerns for fraudulent case that I had won in court with the police officer, James Wood. So I brought you this, this court documents to go over with right quick. Basically, if you look at the second page, it shows number eight, a warning where if this is falsified or falsely done, that you could be convicted of a felony punishable up to five years imprisonment. or falsely done, that you could be convicted of a felony punishable up to five years imprisonment. And then if you go to the next page, number three, I have marked on mine, but it says Oklahoma, it says Oklahoma top. At the very bottom, James Wood has signed this, and it says unlawful to falsify, report crime. You will be prosecuted. He checked yes on that and signed it. So there's two documents where he signed that if this was falsely done, that he would be convicted of felony. Okay? So if you go over to what I have marked, it's page five on mine, I apologize, it says case narrative right here. You'll notice that it says Casey Vague at the top, Officer Casey Vague as the case narrative. Then if you turn to the next page, you'll see that that narrative is not signed and was filed unsigned. And if you read it, it's a third party. James Wood came to me and told me this, this, you know, and it's like Casey Vague done the report, but it's unsigned. Over in the first court hearing, if you go through to page 15 on the first court hearing, I've got it marked here, where Mr. Wood asked to read the, that deal right there, the narrative that Casey Vague wrote. When asked if he wrote it by the court, he said it is something that he typed, that he did type it. The court asked him again, he said, I typed it, I did type this. Okay? But it has Casey Vague's name top and bottom, but it wasn't signed. So Mr. Wood tells them that he wrote this, he typed it. Mr. Vague did not, the one whose name is at top and bottom and to be signed. So that's fraud. I mean, he fraudulently done that. Then when they're questioning this, down below it, line number 24, it says, well, I can just get rid of it then. You know, if you don't, if you don't like what you're seeing, I'll get rid of it. So it's kind of like getting caught, you know, something in your car, oh, I still let out. Anyway, the next page, it shows that the court asked him again, did you, did you type this document? It's page 16, I apologize. Line five, the court asked, did you type this document? Yes, sir, I typed it. I typed it as my statement. But yet it has Casey Vague's name as narrator at the top and his, for his signature at the bottom, but it was unsigned, and it was filed unsigned. Okay? At the very end back here, if you go to page number 18 on this court hearing.
Mr. Ring, three minutes.
It says, basically what this says is that there's two court hearings here where the judge says it was fraud, and he signed two documents saying if it was falsely done or fraud, that he'd be convicted of a felony. He's still a police officer with no reprimand. I don't think we need police like that. There's two more, there's two more statements on the back from two other ladies. One is a plot for murder, the other one is a conspiracy to break into somebody's, or he should break into somebody's house. I would appreciate if you would read those. Those are signed and notarized by the other people who wrote those. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Item number four, city manager's presentation of employee of the month for May to Karen Drain of planning code enforcement. Come on up here.
I really don't know whether we ought to write that as a short-term or anything.
Is this a going-away present?
It's my pleasure to do this tonight. Mr. McDougal asked that, since I'm Karen's supervisor, if I'd like to do this, and this is fitting that she is selected as employee of the month for May because this month, June, is her last month here for the city, at least full-time. And Karen has been with the city for 27 years total. The last seven years have been in the planning department. Four years before that, at the city clerk's office, 14 years in the water department, and two years in the switchboard. Of course, her last seven years of planning have been the best.
Last few years that you had here.
But I've got lots of great stories about Karen, but we can't go on and on. In my four years here, she's just been such a pleasure to work with and always has a very positive attitude. People have, speak very highly of her, in terms of the general public, that interact with her. And we've already had calls from lake lot residents that are very, very concerned after Karen retires because, because she has, has kind of been the keeper, the key to the lake lots out there for so many years. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to present to Karen Drain, employee of the month for May, and to wish her a happy retirement.
Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
No going-away speech? Item number five, discussing, consider approval of the CDBG fiscal year 2012-2013 one-year action plan for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. I guess, Mike, you can come up and tell us, or explain to us what was in our packet.
All I can say is that's a lot of initials.
This is year three of a five-year plan.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm Mike Wolf with the City of Shawnee Urban Renewal Authority. And the consolidated action plan, we actually do a five-year plan each five years that delineates what we're going to do in the next five years, year by year. And then HUD also requires us, before, this is almost like an application for funding each year. So we have to do a consolidated one-year action plan each year, which says what we plan to do the next year. And it gives information in it also that, about the city and some of the things that numbers and so forth that we need to use in our action plan.
There's information in here about types of repairs, or, you know, numbers of repairs, or emergency assistance. But, and it's like $300,000 plus another $50,000 is what is in this budget. How is that different from what we've had this current year? Was that like $293 or something? Is this a little bit more?
Well, the, last year, we were at around $400,000.
Okay.
Plus program income.
Okay.
Now, what this shows is for the next year, and it only includes CDBG funding that we receive for the next year. It does not include program income. Now, it does include program income, but we minimize the program income because if we don't reach, if we, if we set it too high and we don't reach it, then there's a lot of paperwork that we have to go through to readjust it.
Okay.
So our program income's about $60,000 a year for CDBG. We do have program income that, from home, a home program, which is, is not included in this because it's not CDBG. We have probably $120,000 on hand with home funds, and we receive about $30,000 a year with home program income. And then there's another program, too. It's the NSP. And if you recall, about two years ago, well, actually, three years ago, we were funded for the NSP program, Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We received approximately $800,000, I believe. Excuse me. It was $400,000, then we had some extra from CDBG also. So the NSP was $400,000. And we're receiving about $15,000 a year of program income off of the NSP program. And we do have other funds, too, that we're allowed to keep funding for at least seven years, and it has to be spent by the end of the seven years. But we do have about $400,000 in CDBG that's previous years that we are spending. So right now, on hand, we probably have around between $900,000 and $950,000.
Okay. That's in the process because of some of the plans that you have in place?
Right.
Okay. Some.
Like I mentioned earlier, there's some, there's some money that we have, that we have to spend by a certain time. So the last, we have to spend about the seventh year, so we have some funding that we'll be spending it out of the seventh year, and then we'll be continuing on. It's always kind of, it kind of rolls over each year.
Okay. All right. But these are CDBG, okay.
I'd move we approve the CDBG for 2012-2013 Plan of Action.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Commissioner Sims to approve the one-year action plan. Any questions or comments? Okay, call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Item number six, consider offer from Texoma Land Consultants to lease additional mineral rights on a tract of property the city owns in the Shawnee Twin Lakes area. This tract was not in the lease approved at the May 21st meeting. This would be with the same compensation and conditions as approved at that time.
So what's the title, Mike, or your name?
Uh, would you click that up there?
14 something.
14, 55, 56. Jim Roberts is here with Texoma Land, so I just tell you.
We're sure that's all?
That was the next question.
We don't need to come back again or do another title search or anything?
Actually, I apologize terribly. I'm Jim Roberts with Texoma Land Consultants. Originally, this is a tract that we first were, were using when we put the city land together, and my boss, owner of Texoma, offers his apologies that somehow this got overlooked. So since the, it was already approved, the other tracts, we follow the procedure that was given to us in that we just present a new letter offer to the city, which we did do on May 24th. I believe that's the date. And we're including another 400 and
The 441.35.
Correct. So that's going to put you up to 1,459.34 acres total. So the leases for the other tracts were already signed, and those checks have been delivered to the city. So I appreciate your all the consideration tonight to approve. I actually have, have that lease for Section 14 with me. I'm not trying to be presumptive, but we've had a real good working relationship with everyone at the city, and I really appreciate that a lot. And our apologies that this got overlooked. Any questions that anybody has?
Thank you. All right. Much pleasure.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Sims to approve.
Second.
And second by Vice Mayor Collier. Anything else? Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, public hearing and presentation of the 2012-2013 fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Believe it or not, this is the fourth budget that I will present to the city commission here in the city of Shawnee. So time is passing us by. We've been through some rough times over the last four years, I've got to say. We've also been through some good times, and I think this budget is one of those. We have, we have tightened our belts, employees have taken cuts in pay, they've taken furlough days, they've given up things in union contracts, you name it, we've done it, and we made it through. And I think this budget will propose that we're going to do some good things for our employees and our good things in the community. Thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year ending 2013 budget. This is a draft, our first hearing, I guess, for opportunity for the public to come speak about it. Our next one will be on the 18th. Certainly, we found some errors over the weekend that we forgot to take out, that were brought up by Commissioners, and there may be others that we need to find. But right now, we're just presenting something. Remember, too, this draft budget is a working document. It's not something that we write in stone all throughout the year. If we have issues, say between line items, we make changes to those. If we have other major issues that require transfers from department to department, we bring those to the city commissioners. So it's definitely a document that we work with all year long to provide a guide for our revenues and expenses. And I'm going to hit, basically, general fund and SMA tonight. The full budgets were provided to city commissioners. If any of the citizens would like that as well, we can get it for them. But we're just going to hit the highlights tonight. Our largest revenue in the general fund is sales tax. We live and die off of it. You and I, as Commissioners, we talk about this all of the time. In my experience, I'm usually not trying to go to the commission in the last month of the budget year in order to talk about budget, but the way that we get the most of our funding in the general fund, we try to get 11 to, 11 and a half, 12 months' worth of revenues so that we can see what's really going on. That way, I'm only forecasting for 13 months instead of 14 or 15. So for sales tax this year, we're presenting to you all a modest, I think, modest 2.5% increase in, in sales tax funding. We've seen about, overall, in the 11 months that we have for sales tax history this year, about a 2.67% increase. We budgeted for about a 2% increase for this year, and we're seeing about a 2.67% increase for this year. So that 2.5% increase is over this year's actuals, what our, this year's proposed actuals are. Fines and forfeitures. You may know that we've had several ceremonies with police officers, and that's another one of the large revenue streams that we have, is fines and forfeitures in the police department. Lots of new officers on the road, full staff. We haven't had that in the three years that I've been your manager, and now we do. So we're expecting that we're going to see an increase in that. We also, Commissioners also allowed us to apply for the COPS grant, and we got that. So those three officers were provided just for that, primarily for specific tasks and, and jobs that the chief would like to put them into. Fund balance. We talk about this every year. Fund balance is our savings account in the city. We're probably in the 2.9 to 3, 3.1 million dollars in cash fund balance range. Sounds like a lot of money. Our general fund budget's $18 million. With 3.1 million dollars in cash, that's only two and a half months' worth of operating reserve. I know this was prior to me, but in 2007, the city had an ice storm that cost us several hundred thousand dollars because we couldn't just leave broken limbs in the street, and that's what that money's for. It's for rainy day money. We've told the Commissioners that we wanted to achieve a minimum of 10%. Even with the economic downturn, with the employees, and the department heads tightening their budgets a little bit, we made it through, and now we've managed to achieve that, that level. I'll talk more about that later, but one of the things, too, that we're doing is completely implementing the compensation and classification report that you guys will actually get a report from our consultant on, on next month.
Excuse me now. Did we ever, didn't, do we receive all of our monies from past cleanups, like storm cleanups?
No. We, we still have some that's left from the state. Don probably has a little bit closer idea of the number, but we've gotten the majority of it, but there's still some that's out there that's outstanding. Yes, sir?
Did, I was thinking legislature appropriate enough to?
Thank, we got some, sir, but we, we didn't get it all done. Do you have a number off the top of your head?
It's less than 10,000 is still state dollars right now. The rest of it has been paid, so the majority of it we have received. And the other is just a matter of state processing checks, working through all the money.
Thank you.
During this, this budget year, Commissioners, we, we've lived within our means. We've lived within our means every year. We balance the budget every year. That's a requirement by state law. We don't have any choice.
There's no choice.
So our expenses never exceed our income. Therefore, this year, we wanted to fully implement the compensation and classification study for the city. To do that, we've got several positions that we needed to hike up, and we needed to reward the employees for their sticking around with the city through the bad times. So now that we have some fund balance, much more than the, the minimum 10% that we've talked to Commissioners about over the years, we're going to budget some of that, bring it in as a revenue, and we're going to provide those raises and implement that study. Moving on, continued the $1,100,000 transfer from the Shawnee Municipal authority that the general fund employees do on behalf of Moving on, continued the one million, one-hundred thousand dollar transfer from the Shawnee Municipal Authority that the General Fund employees do on behalf of the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And truly, not much has changed in that over the last three years because we took pay cuts, we didn't have increases and so we need to look at that periodically, but we didn't change it this year. An additional one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from SMA for a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for debt repayment from the General Fund. On paper, our auditors have kept track of basically money, bills that were paid on behalf of SMA by the General Fund. That total is going to, we're trying to pay it back.
In years past.
In years past, many years past. It's probably been ten years.
Yeah.
And so the money is actually owed the General Fund, so we've been trying one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars a year. We can do it now with two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year and speed that up from a ten-year period to a five-year period.
When does that debt go away?
Twenty thirteen, probably twenty seventeen or so, right about that. Personal services, and I've kind of, for the purposes of the presentation, lumped in all of the departments from a personal services standpoint. So like I mentioned, fully implement the Classification And Compensation Report. I wanted to highlight, I've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of years, in the last two years, we've had one-hundred-and-twenty positions that have turned over. That's a lot. We only have two-hundred-and-eighty positions in the city. So, and many of those positions in some of these departments, dispatch thirteen times, streets thirteen times, expo eleven positions, cemetery six positions. In dispatch, if we're full, we operate with twelve employees. In streets, if we operate full, we operate with ten. So you can see what's happened over the last couple of years and those positions are some of our lower paid positions and they're turning over because there's competition out there. The expo is very much the same way and the cemetery as well. We're also seeing a lot of retirements. We have approximately fifty that are eligible during this budget year to retire. It's a great thing for me as a manager in some respects because the ones that have been here for thirty years have great knowledge and there's a great brain drain, but they're also more expensive. It's okay, but when they retire, hopefully we can replace them with a less expensive employee and that helps our budget as well. But really, to here to point out is that we have fifty positions that are set up for retirement, potentially during this year. That doesn't mean they'll all go, but that does mean that, you know, with uncompensated absences and those type of things that we pay out upon retirement, those things have costs that we have to build in every year as well. Sixteen non-union make the rule of eighty, which means they could retire with full benefits.
Sixteen of the fifty or sixteen in additional to fifty?
Sixteen in addition.
Okay.
Twenty police and fire employees are eligible to retire right now. Pension, we're looking at ways to manage our pension costs that are currently at twenty-two-point-five-one percent. We are working with a law firm in Oklahoma City that will help us manage those costs better and we'll be bringing that to Commissioners here in the latter half of 2012. And of course, we mentioned at previous meetings that our health insurance costs are coming down. I think that's a combination of things, but we have a good relationship with Blue Cost Blue Shield and we're real happy with service. And I want to point out too that the work group manages that. City Manager doesn't manage that, Human Resource Department doesn't manage that. We have an employee work group that works with it. They've been given their benefit and they manage it.
How many people manage that?
Well, we have a consultant that actually comes in and advises the work group, but there's basically one individual from each department that actually sits on that work group committee. Additional staff, my department, my department is a hundred thousand dollars roughly more than it was last year. I would like to take and promote two department heads from within to make them deputy city managers of internal affairs and external affairs and kind of divide up the duties and then also take that hundred thousand dollars part of it and hire two new people in their department to help pick up the slack. SMA, two additional valve crew. We've talked about the valve crew a lot. One of the problems we had years ago, last year in August, was that we had trouble locating valves. If we did locate them, they weren't working. We've not paid attention to that need in our water system for a long time. So we have two now and Jim Beard's always wanted four and so now we're going to get to the four that he wants and then they'll go out there and they'll regularly maintain them, install new ones, show up at breaks, those types of things to provide that service to the rest of the SMA staff. Also in GIS, Geographic Information System Manager. We have talked about this position for a long time. Geographic Information Systems is a geographic representation of data. And it takes data and combines it all together and turns it into a, I would call an end-user type of document. We will then be able to map every hydrant, every line, the size, the date it was put in, all those things and collect the data. We have a lot of it now, but geo-referencing it means we know within plus or minus three feet exactly where it is and then we put all that data into a software program.
Seems like we had always talked about that in the Engineering Department, but the purpose was initially for utility locations.
There are applications probably in every department, Mayor, that we could use that for, from the clerk's office to finance to planning and engineering and SMA. I think our thoughts were that our primary focus, especially with the master plan that'll be coming to Commissioners probably at our next meeting, is we do it all together and we start with SMA because that's the primary, we'll use it most in that department. It'll help us the most there. Couple of things in the Fire Department, for whatever reason, chief's salary's always been over in suppression and we've moved it to prevention and we've restored training levels to normal levels. That's one of the things that the Fire Department gave up during the budget downturn was their training. So we've restored that to what I'll call normal levels, although we'd all like to have more money for training. O-MAG insurance premiums are now allocated to each department appropriately. HR, fully implementing the Classification Compensation Report, the turnover has just got to stop. Not only is HR stressed, every department's stressed because we're spending money and dollars, training people, getting them CDLs, whatever it is that they need to do their job and then they're gone within six months, so we need to do more about that. Other notable changes, finance. You saw earlier this year, we did an RFP. We'd had I Bailey for several years. We decided to put it out for proposals and one of the proposals we got was thirty thousand dollars less than what we were paying. That's a great... Reorganization of positions. Talk about retirements, the only one in that department that's not eligible to retire is Sidney. So got some great institutional knowledge there, lost a little bit this year, sad about that, but reorganizing the positions and making some changes there. I'd like to also add that of course, as a look into the future, I've mentioned Commissioners and staff members, Grant Rider, Public Information Officer, Business License Clerk, we talked about that last meeting, and a purchasing position. I really feel like we can save them some money internally if we have somebody that's responsible for purchasing. Everything from paper clips to RFPs for projects. And fixed assets. Workers' compensation, always a, I was amazed when I came to Oklahoma and I saw the type of dollars that we're spending on workers' compensation. Claims have leveled off. We've worked toward trying to solve the claims, get the employees better, try to make their situation better, get them back to work, all of those things, and the numbers have come down. Each department's workman's compensation has also been allocated out by their actual code, meaning that some positions are considered more dangerous than others and believe it or not, SMA took a little bit of a hit because our employees that end up down below ground actually have a pretty high risk. So we've allocated that out to each of the departments appropriately and we've been wanting to do that for a while and we've finally gotten around to it. And also, we've budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for handicap accessible van for Mr. Jeff Rogers. Third penny capital. This is probably the most controversial and thought-out part of the budget. You know, when you're paying people salaries, you pay them their salaries plus whatever the raises are going to be this year and then you figure their benefits and those types of things and if you've got car repairs, truck repairs, tires, that kind of stuff, you can do that. This is probably the part that I wanted to spend the most time on tonight and Sidney and I could certainly take whatever questions Commissioners have. Notable projects. You see on that screen, three million dollars for a new tower, tower repair and dispatch console replacement. It was Commissioners that really believed that this was something that they wanted to do and they didn't want to wait, they wanted to do it now. Three million dollars for a new pool. Commissioners heard from their citizens that a pool is what they wanted put in the budget. Computer, server, iPad replacements. We've come to depend on these things quite a lot lately. And we're deploying them in other places than just the City Commission meeting. They'll be in fire trucks, they'll be in police cars. We're talking about maybe even changing out what we've been doing, but providing that technology to other departments as well, in the field and in the vehicle. City Commission Electronic Boating System. Ten new vehicles are in the budget this year. Eight fully equipped police and two trucks. That's actually less than we normally do. The Crown Vic is no longer, so we're looking at other options, but going back from the pickups to sedans for police cars. Wayfinding, that's been in the budget since, well, it's not maybe been in the budget, but it's been something that we wanted to do for a long time. Police range improvements.
Is that fully funded, a hundred and seventy-five thousand? And you've got, fully funding then, let's see, somebody matches that, who is it?
Yes, sir, the CBB. They voted to re-up their commitment to finishing that project.
So they're matching the hundred and seventy-five thousand?
They, I believe, are up to a hundred thousand is what their request was, sir.
So we're talking about a total of two-hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes, sir. Four additional electronic ticketing machines. I think it's four, Russ, did you put four in there?
Yeah, I believe it is four.
I believe it was four. These are three thousand dollars apiece, but if Mary Ann doesn't get them, she's going to run us all off.
Twelve thousand dollars there probably saves us, I don't know, fifteen thousand dollars in data entry time in the clerk's office, it's just that, it's just that simple. That will get pretty much everybody on patrol again to write...
A device.
A device.
Scanning gun.
It's like their radar gun, it's their ticket gun, is what I call it. But it will get them a device and that means you don't have data entry, you don't have mistakes, you don't have pieces of paper to handle, you don't have the time to do it. I mean, it's just, you don't have to read their bad handwriting, it's huge.
Does that just provide basically enough for, say we've got ten cars on patrol at a given time?
I think probably so. It doesn't cover animal control, it doesn't do code enforcement, any of the outline, but it should take care of all of patrol.
Right, but just enough for those on duty, not...
I think it's enough to have on duty and also recharging, you have to be able to put them in the cradle.
So what does that do if we consider licensing, building inspector, or code enforcement, I guess, excuse me?
They don't write that many tickets today.
Is that not an...
They don't write that many, but I mean, I'd love for them to, animal control and code enforcement to do it electronically as well, but right now, that's not the significant issue for us, but we're trying to get papers. He came back. We're talking about your process machines.
How many, how many did you want to buy this year?
I believe four.
Does that just give one basically per car that's on duty or is it, everybody end up with one?
Now, that'd be enough to help the complete shift.
Shift, okay.
Replacement of ballistic vests, no need more to say about that. Mower replacement, always replacing mowers, we're always replacing them. They get a workout every year, so we've got to continue to do that. Thirty-six thousand dollars for parks, cemetery and animal control.
How much is animal control, I mean? Thirty-six thousand?
Now, that's far.
Uh, I'd have to look back, Commissioner, I don't know exactly what it was. There were two large purchases and one small one. Russ, do you remember how much you put in for animal control for the mower?
Um, for the animal control mower, this night, six.
Oh, that's a one mower for out of the animal.
Right. Continuing on with the third penny capital, brush pumper two replacement, storm shelter at the Bryan Street Station.
Or is that a one mower above all we just replaced or is that, then we just send a truck to have a bed put on somewhere? Is that two more besides that or is that just more?
This is just one more.
Okay.
They're both getting up there in eight.
Okay, so that's a brush pumper for station two.
Number two.
Station two.
Station two, that's a brush pumper at station two replacement. Okay.
Engine two replacement, we've talked about that. Storm, full storm signal replacement. Don had some out there that...
Okay, wait, engine two replacement, so this is an additional half from this year? We had half last year and then half this year. Half in 2011, 2012, no, that's not, yeah, and the other half in the future, 2012, 2013, to do the whole thing.
Yes.
Well, when we did all the shifting around on the, on the thing we had...
On the projects.
Right.
We had to cut that.
Right, so that what we have budgeted two-hundred and sixty-five thousand, we put two-hundred in with it this year, which makes it four sixty-five.
Okay.
You know, you know how our funding works, we've still got, you got, the Commission prioritized those projects for us. After we get the library done and we get the tract done, then we may end up using some of that money if there's any left over for the replacement of that, but we didn't know if we'd have any money left over, so we wanted to make sure we could budget for it for this year so that we could purchase it.
I guess I was under the understanding that we already had some of that funded in the regular budget this current year.
What's two-hundred and sixty-five thousand?
But then we don't need it for next year.
What, it's four-hundred and sixty-five thousand, I'll be hinting.
Right, I'm not talking about what we financed in December, I thought in our regular budget allocations for our capital maintenance replacement, that we had some money budgeted for the...
We did, it's considered, we're rolling it over.
Right.
Okay, so this is a new project, this is either rollover, what we will see happen in the upcoming years, or something because we have enough money to finance it? Okay, okay.
Stormwater modeling. We've got a lot of problems with flooding in Shawnee.
That's not enough money.
It's not enough money.
Because of engineering, not out of SMA?
We budgeted both, is that the answer to your question?
Yeah, okay. Because of engineering needs for stormwater modeling?
You know, I guess water's related, whether it's on the ground or running through pipes regardless, and so we used SMA as part of it as well.
I would think on SMA as well, I'm just questioning.
Okay, okay. We can certainly do that, Mayor. I think from our perspective, it was something that citywide we need to do. There's a couple of different parts to it. This is really just the first part where we get software that we can use to model new development, potential new development and what the impact will be on our stormwater system and I think this is really the first leg of it. The goal being that we have a stormwater utility that will address easements, stormwater detention in neighborhoods, public stormwater. We have the perfect example of a citizen, you and I did, that was out there that the last heavy rain we had this spring that was really concerned about it backing up and the ten employees that we have in the street department can't concentrate on our stormwater, wet weather streams as I'll call them like they should. So it's probably a dual or a tri-purpose and City Engineer can address more of that if the Commissioners have other questions. You know, you talk about a backhoe, but when you're talking about a piece of equipment that's anywhere from forty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars, I just wanted to highlight it. A patch truck, that patch truck I think has got over six-hundred thousand miles on it and so it's time to replace it.
It goes real slow, yeah.
And the Engineering Department, Street Department's a...
They so red, so that's really not that unusual.
Well, that's true, but it's also got some age on it, Commissioner, so it's time.
Well, I didn't, in our emails and so forth, I didn't question, because I do realize that that has a lot of miles on it, so I didn't question that particular, particular purchase, I think, an expensive purchase, but I didn't question that, or the backhoe, because those are equipment you've got to have every day. That airport walking trail, that's... That airport walking trail, that's budgeted four hundred thousand. Is that what we set up in the bond for that?
Yes, sir. We're in the process of getting engineering numbers and getting in, asking the engineering department here to do it. Save us twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars in engineering fees. Santa Fe Depot tile. It's one of our city landmarks. We want to continue to help put improvements into that. And as you all know, the Santa Fe Depot and the Park County Museum are working on a fundraising campaign as well to move a lot of the items that they have in that building, and we want to continue to upgrade it as well.
Is that roof tile?
No, that's the inside tile.
Okay, okay.
Wall tile. Dockery park upgrades. Y runs that for us. They came to James and I probably January or so, maybe the fall. We've done some things out there, provided a zero-turn radius lawnmower and some other things to try and help them maintain that facility. And we need to make some upgrades to the park and to the building.
Does that include the water line, James, to run the water down there?
No, sir, we're actually in the process of putting that water line in pretty soon, next week or two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Playground equipment, thirty thousand dollars in upgrades.
Is that on any particular part? Was that just due out to the city or what, James?
It's not any particular part. There's some stuff that we're trying to get, or some of the smaller units from there for a long time. I'll go ahead and pull some of it out.
Couple of additional things. You know, we have an ADA compliance plan that we're trying to become compliant with. And so you're seeing us do a lot of sidewalk ramps and approaches that are a part of that requirement. Also having a restroom here in City Hall that is ADA compliant is another one of the things that we need to complete. And we need to do that, and it is in the budget this year. Municipal auditorium, windows, brick ceiling and tuck pointing, heating and air conditioning. And we've all talked about that over the years. We, James and I have wrestled with this one, and we need to hire an architect to come in and design the system for us.
Entrance on that municipal auditorium is, there is a concrete surface, or whatever it is that's on there is deteriorating. So you can see the foam, or, you know, that definitely needs attention. And is that air conditioning? Are we funding all of that, or half of it, or what?
That's about half of it.
So is air and heat and air still two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's half of the cost.
Okay, and we don't have a rollover because it got overlooked? Or something, we don't have that much already built in?
That is correct. We overlooked it in this year's budget, so we needed to put it back in there.
Yep. Okay.
How are we gonna pay for it? Really, the point of this slide and the next one are really just some quick ways to kind of look at this. Six million dollars is what we need to finance if we're gonna do the pool, and we're gonna do the radio and tower upgrades this year. We estimate about five million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes in for that third penny. What we did was, is we took out the encumbered money that we have to every year. And that's police and fire and SEDF and our debt service. And what's remaining for the three oh one and three oh two funds is the million eight oh five nine forty-five seventy-six in the three oh one fund, and the two million thirty-nine thousand nine sixty-nine thirty-eight in the three oh two fund. What that does is, you'll see the asterisks there. It takes, it takes our available cash if we finance down. It's not necessarily a bad thing. When commissioners and myself and Cindy talked about this, we talked about public policy. We need to improve the radio system. We've got to do that. It's good public policy. I've talked before about how we need to pay as we go, and everybody needs to do it. But the city of Shawnee has to step up to the plate and be responsible for the dollars that it needs to put out for that system as well. And your manager's opposition to the pool system in the past has been, okay, so we take another five hundred thousand dollars this year, as James Bryce presented, and we fix the rails. But we've still got a roof that leaks, we still have gang showers, we still haven't fixed the decking issues. So what Commissioner said was, is let's do it. And so we've managed a way to finance it. And basically what we're talking about doing is going out for another bond issue for six million dollars to fund those projects fully. What that means for our budget, it means we're gonna have to cut into the three oh one and three oh two funds in order to do that.
I'd like to make sure we have some hard data about the actual cost and what we're gonna do on the tower and what we're gonna do on the pool before we start talking, you know, selling bonds. I'd like to have the hard, hard cost on that. It's not just estimate some hard cost on that.
Well, remember, we funded the majority of the department's needs, their immediate needs for the budget year through this existing budget.
But I'm just saying, we decide on that six million dollars, I want the hard cost figures on it.
I understand. My point, Commissioner, was only that we wanted to provide something to commissioners that you all talked about that you wanted, and we've come up with a plan to do that. We can change it when those numbers change, if they change.
Also, you know, we need, I think we need to go back and talk to our bonds people and see what the penalties are gonna be, if any, on maybe setting those one we just sold in December, and any future bond, and see what, if there's a penalty or if we're gonna save some more money, I know interest rates are down again. So we're gonna, you know, save some money, or it's gonna cost us money to combine those or what? But I mean, we're hitting ourselves pretty hard here for five or six years, and...
That was, that was my next comment, is the new financing that we've proposed will probably be at that two percent interest rate, or somewhere there about that, because interest rates are pretty low. But it's gonna encumber that debt service and interest, or principal and interest for the next eight years. So for the next four and a half, we'll have both the three point two five that we did in December, plus an additional encumbrance for eight years, if commissioners approve the budget and approve a bond issue. So what it does there, as you'll see at the bottom, is it reduces, the point of that, these two lines at the bottom, is really just to show commissioners that we're, we're going, if we're gonna finance these things, we have less dollars in our three oh one, which is our general capital purchase. Lawnmowers, police cars, that type of three. And our three oh two fund is reduced, which has traditionally been streets and sidewalks and things like that. We are trying to work within our means. We do have a third penny that we can borrow from. But what it does to the rest of our third penny is it restricts the funds to principal and interest for projects that we finance. I'd love to tell you that we could grow that third penny. It has grown a little bit. But in the, in the four years that I've been presenting budgets to the city commission, it's only grown three hundred thousand dollars. So trying to grow the pie as well, but want to make crystal clear that this determination for a piece of public policy could be tough for the next eight years, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that we on a bond issue, the past one and the one we're talking about, we need to take a good hard look on which ways the best, whether refinance the other one or put them in there for ten or eleven years, and so we can have our streets and everything else and funds to deal with. But I mean, I think we need to take a good hard look at that before we make decisions.
Once you get hard costs, we would look at all the different scenarios.
Right now, all we've done with bond council is just contact them and say, gentlemen, what kind of interest rate are you getting these days? That's as much as conversations we've had with them.
I want you to be aware that I'm, you know, I wanna take a look at all of it.
So the, basically what you're saying is that should we approve the budget at our next meeting with these conditions in it? That what we're saying is that we approve the initiation of review of possibly six million dollars more of large capital improvements, investments?
And you, it would come before you to approve?
And pay, right, but that begins the process where the staff would start looking at the actual details of the projects and what bonding cost would be, and how we wrap all that together. I mean, I know you've given us a number of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, but until we get down to the very end to see what it's gonna be. But that's what we're looking at, is obligating ourselves for these two projects through the payment with revenues from the third penny, which really, the third penny, we call it capital in streets, but it's really kind of, I mean, it's been our maintenance money. It's been how we maintain streets, it's been how we maintain having enough police cars and having enough playground equipment and everything else that you just went through the list on.
Right.
But yeah, it does reduce that, that number that we have for those items.
The very reality is, is you can't really borrow for much cheaper than you can now. But if we do borrow, it's going to encumber that money for several years, and we're gonna have to live with it. You all know that.
Well, and I think that when the citizens said we had to make do with what we had, this is an option.
It is.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
This slide really is, has a lot of information on it. The only thing I want to point out here is that what happens with the capital in the roads, the two million thirty-nine thousand nine sixty-nine thirty-eight and the capital one eight oh five nine forty-five forty-six shrinks. That's it, it's just to depict that. The others, the others, police and fire and economic development, they maintain the same, debt servicing increases. So that's really all there is on that one. And lastly, Jim Beard's gonna come up and talk about SMA's capital projects.
Before we get off of that, is it still in the budget for the plane, for the training for the police and fire?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the information that goes along with that?
Russ, would you like to address that, the training facility?
For the police and fire? Are you trying to build up a certain amount of money, or what?
Yes, sir, we're trying to build a fund so we can establish the facility up there. The firearms range is, is used on a weekly basis, a couple times a week. Other agencies coming in. Right now, we're in a partnership with Gordon Cooper Technology Center. It's been a great partnership, but we'd love to have the facility out of the range so that we could have somebody there either putting on classes or being available for the firearms instruction. I would still like to partner with Gordon Cooper in that aspect, as far as classes. That's been, like I said, it's been a great partnership, and I want to continue that, but...
So what kind of total funds are we talking about? How long are we talking about building them up? How much total funds are we talking about?
Somewhere in the area of three hundred to three hundred and seventy-five. So it's gonna take a while. I'm patient, and Gordon Cooper's great, they're giving us space right now.
Thank you.
It's a long-term goal.
Is that in capital, or is that in the two pennies?
In capital, in three, in three oh one.
Yeah, five minutes.
Works for me.
We know.
Okay, here we go. At the top, I just showed on the pipe bursting and water line rehab where we've been the last five years, and then where we're going. You can see, usually in the pipe bursting, we just kept enough in there the first three years there to do emergencies. And then, if you'll notice, the rate increase passed nine, eight, oh nine, but it was effective eleven, oh nine. But the first budget year, the first year we could budget for projects was ten, eleven, and that's when it started going up. And then next year, we hope to put a million dollars in water line rehab and a million dollars in sewer pipe bursting, so we can start accomplishing more than just...
Where are we on our contract, on the engineer, I mean, on, what do you call that, survey and all that pipe?
Master plan for the water distribution?
Yeah, the master plan, this, what we'll do on this stuff is what we know needs to be done.
I know, but where are we on that contract?
On the master plan?
Yeah.
I'll bring it to you in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're gonna do is just stuff that we know needs to be done, two-inch lines and stuff before the...
Back up, just thinking, you're negotiating right now with Smith Roberts, is that right?
Right.
Okay, so you should have a plan at the next meeting?
Yeah, we should bring it to you in the next meeting, along with the drought management plan.
Well, did you say something about a water increase, or are the rates going up again, or what's...
There's a, there's a small increase this next year.
It's on the base, and Penny is on the water consumption. I think it's three dollars on the base.
Three dollars on the base. But that's, that's it for a while, until the commission... Does otherwise. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I know everybody's going, like, get hurried, get out of here.
So here's a listing of some of the projects. Starting with customer service, like the halftime pickups for the meat eaters, there's five of them, but they range from ninety-one, I mean, oh one to ninety-six. The hundred and six thousand miles to a hundred and ninety-four thousand miles are just worn out. And then like, the kiosks were rollover from last year. Fishing wharf's got some insurance money that can go with it, a hundred and eighty thousand total, but fifty-two thousand's insurance money. Finished offices out there in the maintenance building. Water plant sludge pond cleaning, we've been, DEQ requires us to put fifty thousand dollars a year in an account to clean those, and it's time to clean one. Backup blower at the water plant, we need one of those, we only have one, the bearings went out. That's what we air wash the filters with, and when it goes down, the plant goes down, so we need a backup system on that. Sandblast coat pipes, valves, the pipe gallery, that's the pipes down below the filters, it's gonna be there forever. And they're rusting, and they need to be sandblasted and coated, so they'll last a long time. You'll see two or three things in here about coating, because that extends the life that we haven't been able to do before. Excuse me. Edwards Tower Altitude Valve Replacement, that's, that's what controls the level of the water towers. That more than likely will probably go to Wolverine instead of Edwards, because now, excuse me, we can run Wolverine over. We've never been able to do that before with the new pumps and controls that we have, I've never seen that. THM Analyzer, that's for their lab at the water plant. It breaks down THMs into four parts where you can really tell, it helps you see what's going on before a problem happens. And then the good thing about it is, you don't have to have a maintenance agreement service plan on it. That's seven to eight thousand dollars a year for some of that equipment. With this, you just, a bottle of helium, you can calibrate yourself, like you do balloons with, that's cheap, that's easy. And then another plan that we have for the lab, just mentioning the lab real quick, is we're gonna, in the next few years, my goal is to get it certified, DEQ certified. Not very many labs in the state are that way, but then, instead of us hiring out lab tests, which we do our in-house anyway, or DEQ will take ours as certified rather than pay somebody else to do it. So that's a goal that I've got in the next few years, just try to get the labs certified. And we've got the personnel to do it, the quality personnel to do it, if we can keep them.
We're working on that.
HVAC upstairs, that's the filter room. There's a PLC panel with electronics in it, it gets too hot and it makes the filters go nuts and overfills them and underfills them. So if we can air, we open the panels up and blow fans in it, but it also shoots humidity in there, and that's not a good thing. So we need to do that. Water distribution, we've already said, water line replacement. Carport cover for valves and fittings, we've got more equipment than we've got room to put it. And we in-house poured a cement pad beside a building. We want to put a carport over it to keep the sun off of, and the rain and the snow and stuff off of some of the fittings and all that. Hydraulic power pack, almost everything we've got now is hydraulic, the valve machine or pumps, saws, because hydraulics can work underwater, and it's just a lot easier. So we replace those every once in a while, explore. Just for the line locator, it replaces a two thousand two S ten. We need something, he's got a lot of electronic equipment, and we need something that's covered that he can keep it inside, not just throw it in the back of a pickup or whatever, so that's the scoop on that. Next. Northside, replace blower. The blower's at, how the north side plant works is with air, so blowers are important out there. And we've replaced some bearings and stuff, but this one needs to be replaced. Recode the screw pump, that's the third one of three. We'll have finished that next year. Coat clarifier wiers, diffusers, that kind of stuff is just operational stuff that's worn out. It's eighty-two model stuff, so it's time to replace, and the diffuser is just what puts the air through it and you keep... the air through it and if you keep those replaced, your plant's more efficient, get better results. Uh, forty horsepower tractor with loader, that's a eighty-two model, it's thirty years old. South side. South side. It's, and we're, don't want to spend any more money than we have to on the south side because its life expectancy is, is like tomorrow, but there's some things we have to do, so this is the stuff that we have to do to keep it running so you get good results. And, uh, the half-ton pickup there, I think it's a ninety-nine Ford with a thousand, a hundred thousand miles on it. Pipe bursting, we've already talked about. Rehab Kimberly lift, we try to do one lift station a year to rehab and this one's, I don't know how that is, I don't remember when that subdivision was built, but it's an old air ejection type that they don't even improve anymore. And, uh, the valve crew, which we have created, as Brian mentioned earlier, about getting two people, two extra people. Those two extra people, right now, we've got four doing it, but I pulled one from water and one from sewer, so this will free up, not only give two more in here, but free up some others. We've rented a excavator for tho, for them for about a month just 'cause we wanted to see if it would work or not. I didn't want to purchase something and then find out if it would work. It's worked out really well. It frees up the back hole for water main breaks and what have you, so they can use the excavator, the crew itself can use it and it doesn't tie up other equipment. And then you also, I don't know if anybody's paying any attention, but then the pipe bursting, the contractors have them and they can get in the backyards with them easier and dig up stuff for back on, you know, make bury up back there or something. So, that's what that is. And then a half-ton pickup, four before pickup for the valve crew because it's a new, it's a new deal. They don't have any, they don't have a pickup.
Is one lift, lift station a year enough or is that a fast enough pace? How many lift stations?
Yeah, I think so. We've only got, we've got, uh, counting West Watkins, I think thirteen. I think we've only got five more that need to be done, so.
Okay. Some of them are kind of critical, but.
Yeah, one a year does it. None, they're not, you know, about to quit or anything, but they just need to be. They don't make them that way. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. And there you go. Mind my five minutes?
Stick ten.
That's all right. Any questions?
I got, what's it, pipe bursting? That's quite a, that's quite an improvement.
Yeah, it's a pretty neat deal.
Yeah, it's very nice. Congratulations. Contractor gets in, gets it done and gets out as soon as he can.
And the more money we allocate for that, the, the better deal we get, you know?
Yeah, 'cause you're doing more, yeah, your volume.
You can't use that one building and what is that, Osmosis building for storage? No way to get to it, huh?
We've already got it full. That's what we call it now, is a warehouse.
Okay, thank you. Yes, but any feelers out there, if anybody want that equipment or haul it off or whatever?
No, really, when we, we have and there's not much of a market for it. But we're gonna talk to the master plan people about maybe since, since we can use it.
Utilize it.
But that's gonna be part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, this is just draft budget. This is our first blush at it. You have a couple more weeks to work on it. Please provide us with any comments or questions either now or later. We'll be happy to answer them.
Well, there's two or three, two or three things that you didn't mention that I'd like to mention 'cause maybe people would like to know. The fishing dock replacement is in the budget.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, one thing I noticed was the telephone system and that's a carryover from last year, the hundred seventy-five thousand. We're not gonna be able to bid that this year or, or we're not gonna be able to get that done or what.
We just won't be able to expend the funds before the end of budget year. When our budget year ends, that's when everything ends and so we'll take it up.
Has to go on the rollover.
Wanted to mention that Officer Rogers, there's a vehicle in the budget for Officer Rogers.
Yes, sir.
And that's some of the things that I wanted to make double share and check and that's what I did, so. And I appreciate, uh, you and Cindy's quick to some of the emails that I sent in and some response and taking care of those budget items to their question, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
We, we appreciate you guys finding our mistakes.
Well, if it's, it's not even after all of this, it's not gonna be perfect, so, I mean, I realize that.
But the best we can, if there was a project that you identified that we can replace with another one, so.
Okay.
We're gonna do that.
It's different looking at it electronically instead of hard copy. We talked about that before and the first one that we worked on isn't totally like the one we have tonight, so that's where all the notes are, in another electronic, slow-moving, um, page flipping one, but, um, but, yeah, we'll look at this and, uh, go from there. Very good. Okay, let me get back to agenda.
New business.
All right. Item number eight, new business.
No new business this evening, Madam Mayor.
About item number nine, administrative reports.
Two and Don promises to be quick.
I missed a tip-off.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sims asked about nine-one-one funding and about hard lines and cell phones, and so we've got some data for you all tonight.
Cell phones are fifty cents, so I.
Correct.
Uh, what it take to increase that? Legislature.
So, it's not happening.
Whoops. Too late now. Anybody else? The bitch is in, don't hurt my bill, it's high enough it is.
I'll start with landlines, which is at the, the first page on the handout that I gave you. Landline nine-one-one fees are based upon what's called the base rate for telephone service. Uh, all the telephone companies that provide service, um, across the state, particularly in this case, Potawatomi County, have their rates established by the Corporation Commission. And part of that rate structure is a base rate for the service and then for additional services that they provide on top of that. The base rate, uh, does not include things like your long-distance calling plan, uh, if you have call waiting, call forwarding, caller ID, any of those things or any additional fees that are attached as part of your normal phone bill that you get every month. So, the base plan for residential customers in Shawnee is eleven dollars and thirty-two cents per month from AT&amp;T, if you have an AT&amp;T landline phone. Currently, there are four thousand nine hundred and sixty residential access lines in Shawnee. That's down from eight thousand and thirty-one in May of two thousand and six, so in six years, we've gone down considerably in that area. And to continue.
Yeah.
That trend. We have a conference call in the morning with AT&amp;T to look at those projected figures and how that's gonna continue. More people are, are getting cell phones, less people are having landlines because we've become more mobile, et cetera. Current rate for commercial customers in Shawnee is thirty-one dollars and four cents a month for the base rate. There are three thousand eight hundred and ninety commercial access lines in Shawnee that's up from thirty-eight, thirty-six, uh, six years ago, and that's obviously due to some additional computer lines being out there that we're, we're sure of and additional businesses that have moved into Shawnee. So, the trend on that is for those lines to continue. The chart that you have, the table that you have at the bottom of the page will show you the, the residential and commercial, uh, amounts, uh, per month based upon the percentage of the base rate. If you took three percent currently, uh, where we're at in nine-one-one, that equates to thirty-four cents per month per landline residential phone in Shawnee. You multiply that times twelve months, in a year, you get four dollars and eight cents. You multiply that times four thousand nine hundred and sixty residential access lines, that equates to twenty thousand dollars, uh, two hundred, twenty thousand, two hundred thirty-six, eighty in revenue. Done that same principle for business lines in the green columns that you see there. And then the final column is the combined revenue, uh, generated in a year based upon percentage. Uh, that, that's the, the revenue generated residential and commercial combined at those rates. So, you have those figures there for you to take a look at. The three percent was.
So, what you're saying right now is that basically what we have is about eighty-three thousand dollars that we?
What we currently have right now is sixty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-nine, twenty is what we would take in.
Oh, combined.
Combined revenue.
Okay.
Landline phones.
Yep.
Coming into nine-one-one service in the city of Shawnee with the, the projection on that continuing to decrease at that rate. The rate of, of three percent was established by resolution, which was taken to a ballot of the, of the people. If you want to increase that, there would be a ballot that would have to go back to the people to increase that. The reason why it was established at three, I can't tell you exactly other than at the time, the state law said you could have up to five percent, uh, and so when the, the resolution was drafted by the previous city commission, I was not here, so I don't know the, the thought behind it, but the first year was at five and then each successful year was set at three in the ballot language, so that's why we're stuck with that, so.
Pot County is thirty.
Pot County is ten percent, uh, across the county for landline phones, so. And again, that's set by ballot, uh, that was established by the voters of Potawatomi County. If they want to raise that any, they would have to go back to a ballot as well. Second page is wireless, uh, fee analysis. Uh, the cell phone fee, as was mentioned, is fifty cents per cell phone per month. That's set by the state legislature, but taken the act of the legislature to change that. Of that fifty cents, the phone company is allowed to keep one penny for their administrative overhead. The remaining forty-nine cents is remitted per month, uh, and then to us on a quarterly basis, uh, by the Central Oklahoma Economic Development District based upon the number of phone users per jurisdiction providing E-nine-one-one service. That's the law, the state of Oklahoma. Uh, there are two jurisdictions, Potawatomi County and the city of Shawnee, which provide nine-one-one services, uh, in our county. So, the current apportionment is forty-nine percent of the wireless funds come to Shawnee, fifty-one percent goes to the county E-nine-one-one system. Uh, for, then you see our revenue figures there, basically, uh, two thousand and ten revenue, we only had a couple of months reporting in there, and so, um, that was kind of down, but in two thousand and eleven, our revenue was a hundred and nineteen thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Currently, so far this year, we've received ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Is that combined or Shawnee?
That's Shawnee's portion, not combined. That's Shawnee's portion.
My grant of mine.
Correct. Uh, as a reminder to you, nine-one-one fees can only be used, uh, for the receipt and distribution of nine-one-one calls. So, as part of our dispatching operation, for instance, uh, if a police officer stops a, a vehicle and runs a traffic tag check or wants a warrant check on that, technically the nine-one-one fees can't be used for providing that kind of service, uh, in the city. Uh, the other question that I had, I'll have to think about this, oh, the question was, was also brought up by Commissioner Sims was, uh, what about, uh, potential for federal grants that are out there? Uh, and I would let you know, commissioners, uh, that, uh, the, uh, nine-one-one next generation, uh, law that was passed a couple of years ago, uh, was appropriated one point two billion dollars, uh, or authorized one point two billion dollars to be used for nine-one-one enhancements. To date, Congress has not funded any of that, so you have an authorization of one point two, you have an appropriation of zero, so there are no funds currently available through federal, uh, grant funds to take a look at that. The legislation is being, uh, looked at again and there's also some changes, uh, potentially to the code which implements that, as I understand it, that the federal agency's looking at. One of the things currently, uh, that's being proposed in that code is that it would require consolidation of PSAPS, Public Safety Answering Points, in order to be eligible to receive that fund. So, instead of funding multiple dispatch locations in a geographic area, they would want you to consolidate that down because technology's improving, the ability to provide that service is improving, and they would make that a condition of the grant program. Now, again, that's all subject to change, even if they ever fund it and how all that floats out. Additionally, homeland security money, just as an aside, uh, from that as well, homeland security money is dwindling fast in the state of Oklahoma. In, uh, two thousand and four, we got a maximum of about thirty million, thirty-two million dollars in homeland security funds in the state of Oklahoma. Uh, this last year, we've got seven million and we expect it to be cut again in half next year. It just continues to dwindle each year and so that, and, and most of that is spread specifically to projects, uh, such as Citizens Corps and other things, buffer zone protection and things that are earmarked that we couldn't spend for any kind of emergency communications type of equipment. So, there really isn't anything there that would help fund the, the nine-one-one system either, but we continue to look for that and continue to watch it, so. Uh, with that, I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of information, thank you, Don. Is that the only report? Brian?
Uh, no, wait, there's one more, I'm sorry. Uh, Justin's gonna come talk about, uh, Mr. Smith, a resident of the city, was talking about a request that City Commissioners approved at our last meeting and he'd like to out by that for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, and I will be brief. Uh, at the last commission meeting, there was a gentleman that spoke under, um, public comments and, uh, he had some concerns about a conditional use permit that was approved by the city commission on April nineteenth of two thousand and ten. And if you might recall, that, um, conditional use permit approved a, a temporary placement of a mobile home at one five three oh five Patterson Road and the owner there, Mr. Boyd, uh, is in the process of constructing a home and, uh, the, uh, temporary, the, the permit allowed the placement of a mobile home, uh, from which, uh, Mr. Boyd and his family could reside in while he completed construction of his home. There was some confusion, um, regarding timeframes. If you recall from that meeting a couple of years ago, the, uh, staff had a recommendation, the planning commission, uh, recommended, um, something that was even more restrictive to, uh, to Mr. Boyd. Uh, the city commission, uh, chose to go with the, uh, city commission's recommendation and there was some back and forth between, um, some, um, between, uh, Mr. Smith and his representative, uh, his attorney at the time regarding those conditions and, and, um, and his concerns that he expressed at the site. And what I, what I did after Mr. Smith's, uh, comments last meeting is I researched the, um, the meeting minutes, uh, looked at the video as well and the audio, um, from that and, uh, what it hinges on is that Mr. Boyd was given six months, six months to, um, do the necessary work to get his permit and then two years to complete the work. And so, it's staff's opinion that, uh, current permit that was issued, both the conditional use permit and the building permit is valid until October nineteenth of two thousand and twelve. And, uh, should Mr. Boyd not complete the home by then, uh, then he would be in violation and, and we would take, um, action at that time. I don't know if any of the commissioners have had a chance to review those, um, minutes as well. Are you happy to answer any questions that you have, though?
Are you notifying the, uh, property or the, I guess, the lease or that date too so that he's aware?
Yes, we, we've had several communications and, and I, I believe that, um.
It's not on lake property, this is just outside.
This is outside, actually.
Oh, okay.
It's on, yeah, it's actually on fifteen acres and, uh, had several conversations and, and I believe, um, um, I believe in good faith, he intends to complete the residence. There is a lot of work to be done. It may not be completed by October nineteenth, uh, in, in which case that, uh, the mobile home will have to be removed per year conditions.
Is, and is it accurate that it's a stem wall with some plumbing inside of it?
That is fairly accurate. That's the.
So, the slab's not been poured?
Slab has not been poured. Um, we've done some inspections for the, for the stem wall. We've, um, also, uh, approved the septic and the, uh, and the well permit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, no, no additional administrative reports this evening.
Hey, item number ten, commissioners' comments. Go ahead.
Has anyone, any group like the CPN or the Second Fox or the county, anyone come forward to participate in the cost of the tower, the communications or anything?
No, sir, not today.
I think we need to do something to pursue that to, 'cause I'm not willing to, to bite off a hundred percent of that communications for, provided for everybody else. The other thing is that, I don't know who's responsible, John or the street department, but, uh, those railroad intersections are shaping up and that. If you have anything to do with that, it's really an improvement, I know, on Forty-Fifth Street and on.
Independence.
Independence.
Oh, yeah, independence.
The, uh, Danza Park and the right of ways are looking good. They're out mowing our today. Appreciate that, they're grown up pretty good, so they're right after. Only thing I have is on the, this deal that's been up before on Woods and Mr. Ring, if, do we need to have an executive session at the next council meeting to see what's happening on that or to participate in that or find out what's going on or whatever? That is a personnel matter, so.
It's a, it's a personnel matter and, uh, to the extent of action internally against the officers, if, if any was, was appropriate or is appropriate. As for the other things, that's a call for the district attorney to make, the allegations of perjury and so forth, that's for the district attorney to prosecute and would not be something and would not be something that, that we would, would handle.
But if we tried to explain, we've been here twice now and we've tried to explain that to, to Mr. Ring or what, I mean, really?
I've not had conversations with him, it's my understanding that other people have, but.
Commissioners, you know, I've, I've spoken to Mr. Ring a couple of times. He periodically arrives at my office and, and wants to talk to me about the subject. You know, I think if there was some sort of official action that the DA's office took that would cause him to, to bring charges up against one of our employees, we might consider it. At this point, it's a personal matter, it's a civil matter between Mr. Ring and, and our employee and he continues to bring that to the city commission to look for action on that. I, I, I don't know what else to say.
I know, I mean, I don't want to ask questions or make comments there, I mean, with that, but I know that's, I mean, personally, I don't, it creates a problem, I think, for the commission and makes us look bad that we're not doing anything, but I'm glad to know that we don't, there's not anything we can do. So I appreciate that in comments, thank you.
Anyone else?
At our last meeting, the mayor and Commissioner Harrod and I were discussing the CVB Subcommittee and Commissioner Harrod indicated that the committee had agreed to pursue forming a trust under the city. I'd like to have that committee report on our next agenda and possible action on that.
We haven't met since then, so I don't know whether it's going to be an actual report or not, seriously. Commissioner Stevens.
Stevens is on that too.
Vice Mayor now, about to tell you, I don't know, seriously, that we're going to have anything to report, but whatever.
Okay, anything else? All right, item number eleven, okay, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please. Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer? Smith?
So what, just cool, girls?
Don't know. Motion carries. We'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, June fourth, two thousand and twelve. We have a forum, item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Collier, second by Commissioner Smith. Call, call roll, please. Collier?
Aye.
Smith? Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number two is consider bids for Lakeview Estates water line replacement.
After reviewing the bids and checking references, staff would like to recommend awarding the Lakeview Edition Water Line Replacement Project to Jordan Contractors Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please. Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, item number three, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports.
Moved to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please. Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, we'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, June fourth, two thousand and twelve. Phyllis is getting ready, we have a quorum. Item number one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please. Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer? Motion carries. Item number two, new business.
No new business or administrative report, Madam Mayor.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Vice Mayor Collier and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please. Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer? Smith?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Move to adjourn.